And welcome to the Wednesday, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in general. Great. We have approval events. Anybody want to make a recommended motions?
Move that the school committee approve minutes for the March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting as presented.
Motion second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Stand on call for a vote. We have to do this via roll call. Hold on, so let me get the... Okay, Bronwyn?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Gianna?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Do we have another motion for meeting minutes?
Does Jamie get the vote?
You forgot.
Get the vote.
No, you like disappeared off my screen. Sorry, Jamie.
No problem. No problem.
I'm in gallery view.
No, no, I am in gallery view, just not big enough because I keep switching back to the documents. So I apologize.
All right, yes.
Uh, yeah, wait, and I see Susie's there too. So Jamie?
Ryan?
Yes.
Susie?
Kevin?
Okay. Now we have another motion for minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting as presented.
Motion is our second.
No problem.
Second.
Motion second. Back to the documents. So I apologize. Okay. Uh, yeah, wait, and I see Susie's there too. So Jamie?
Yes.
Make it open. No further discussion. We will say, Jamie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Okay, we have a third motion for minutes.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes for the April eighth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Stand on call for a vote. Uh, Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes. Susie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, and Armin, yes. We have a motion. Is there a second? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Stand on call for a vote. Uh, Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, and Armin, yes. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Stand on call for a vote. Uh, Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, and Armin, yes. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Stand on call for a vote. Uh, Gianna? Jamie?
Yes.
Do we have a third motion?
Kevin? Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, and Armin, yes. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Stand on call for a vote. Uh, Gianna? Jamie?
Yes.
Do we have a third motion?
Kevin? Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, and Armin, yes. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Stand on call for a vote. Uh, Gianna? Jamie?
Some refrigeration projects, um, that were proposed, again, they are on a much smaller scale than the lighting retrofit project that I just described, but they would be doing some modifications to some motors associated to cooling in the kitchens at all six buildings. Um, the return is much smaller, as is in the investment. The utility ever source again would be paying a hundred percent of those costs. And it would be approximately anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand annually, uh, for those projects. So they're, they're more so as an informational item, uh, Finance Sub also. They're on Finance Sub agenda on Tuesday, yesterday. Um, but I just wanted to kind of make you aware of the fact that these were proposed and I, I think the consensus of both the administration and Finance Sub was that these were no brainers. But I'm happy to answer any questions you, you might have in regards to them. Um, or any concerns you might have about the projects.
Any questions for Tom? Yes, Kevin. Mute, unmute yourself.
Tom, this is, uh, great. Thank you for, for standing on top of this. I guess the, the thing that I'm curious about, uh, it seems like a really opportune time to get these projects done where there are no students in the school or staff in the schools. I- is it going to be possible to get this done while the buildings are closed? Uh, you know, is this within the, the guidelines of what the governor's going to allow to happen?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, I think the, the refrigeration projects are obviously much more contained into just one area. I think once, uh, assuming we move forward, the lighting retrofit projects would, obviously, they would need more, um, access to the high school. So we'll have to work around them, you know, once we get to that point. But again, we're probably two months out, so it's hard to say what, under what parameters we'll be working under at that point, but I think we can, we can handle and give them the areas they need to be working in from day to day without having them, uh, interact with any staff that would be here in the building.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Any other questions for Tom? No, I think any project that has a zero, zero day prepack is a great project for, for the, the system. This is a, this is a huge win and, uh, Kevin, I was, my only question was, I think, you know, can we get some mileage out of this with the, uh, the energy club, the energy committee that, you know, just make sure that I understand what's going on here too is, you know, is because I think this is outside of anything that you guys might have been considering.
You're absolutely right. I was just typing an email to them right now. Uh, I want to make sure I don't forget, so I'm going to send it their way. Um, as soon as we agree that we want to go forward with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I want to, they, they've often asked about these projects and I'm, I'm really excited that we can tell them that, yeah, we'll move forward.
Okay. Tom, do you, do we need a, a motion or is this a just?
I, I think it's more informational since there's no budgetary, uh, funds that are required to be, um, associated to the projects. I think, you know, as long as there's no objection, we'll move forward.
Okay. All right. Any, any other comments? If not, we'll move on to the, the next thing on the agenda. There is a recommended motion, Tom. You want to speak to it?
Um, yeah, so the next item on your agenda is authorization to process the fourth quarter invoices for the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Um, specifically covering transportation services and our tuition for vocational education programs that students participate in. Over the last month or so, Dussie has been holding a number of meetings, kind of providing guidance on how to handle, uh, payments to vendors and they've been pretty clear on, um, support for continuity of service so that whenever school does resume, having vendors around that can provide the, the necessary services that allows schools, schools to function. And so they have recommended that, uh, specifically around collaboratives, that districts, um, think of those entities as basically an extension of the school district. They are kind of established in support of the districts that are members of the collaborative. Uh, they offer various services. In our case, the Lower Pioneer Valley, um, provides us, uh, transportation services, vocational education, special education programs, along with some other services. But those are the three areas that, um, that are probably the largest in scope. And so, um, you know, I'm sure Finance Sub had some great questions about it. Um, talking to my colleagues of the other member districts, I think we kind of all feel that the services that they provide us are important in that we most certainly, uh, similar to the way we are supporting our employees, without payment of these invoices, the collaborative wouldn't have the resources and the revenue to pay their employees. So, uh, they're really dependent upon the member districts to continue paying for the services. Um, you know, especially around transportation. It's, you know, there's been shortages of drivers. They have to go through an extensive training program, so it's not like, you know, if they lay them off and a percentage don't return, that they can easily fill those vacancies. You know, it's, it's, it's a timing, it's a time process that, that they have to be committed to going through weeks of training before they can be, uh, behind the wheel of a, of a bus. So, um, you know, I did also inquire about, or Jamie, I think, asked at Finance Sub about, you know, why we would be paying a hundred percent. Obviously, all their costs are not being incurred at this time, which is a very accurate statement. Uh, when the budgets are developed, obviously, they're planning on providing services over a hundred and eighty school days. Uh, so there's fuel and other costs that aren't being incurred. Um, anything that gets paid that is not used would be available in terms of a credit to the district against future costs associated to services they would be providing us. So whether it be summer transportation, if we have summer programs and/or next school year, uh, in terms of both transportation and/or vocational education. So, um, I'm, I'm hopeful you guys will see the value that the collaborative brings to the district. Um, and be happy to answer any questions.
Jamie, you have anything to add on this?
Sorry. Yeah, we had a, we had a pretty good conversation yesterday, uh, about this at Finance Sub, and I guess my, my, my bigger concern on this, um, you know, obviously, there's parts of this that are kind of no brainers to pay, but there's other parts that are making me nervous paying in full without knowing the credit. That was really my hesitation and the hesitation is, is how long we paying for this for? You know, if we're sitting here in January, none, none of us know the answers to any of this. If we're here in January and we haven't used the bus, are we paying for that bus all the way till January? Um, was my bigger concern because, you know, this, this does come out of our general fund. So, you know, you got to look at it like you're, you're a homeowner in town. You're, you're using your taxpayer dollars. They're going in and we're paying somebody for, for nothing. Um, I get that we're part of a collaborative. So there's a bigger picture to this whole thing. But I was looking at it more in a, you know, we don't know the longevity of this. Um, you know, I, I just want to make sure, you know, we, we at least think through this. If we do it for a period of time, eventually this may come to a head here, um, and we're going to be asking, having to ask questions about whether we're going to pay for something that's non-existent, i.e. we're not using a bus. Um, you know, or are we going to pay for something that's here and now that we're actually going to, uh, see the, see, you know, you know, today? Um, so that was my bigger concern around it. Um, I really don't have an opinion. Well, I'm still learning, uh, about this collaborative. I didn't realize how it all works. Uh, but that was my concern from yesterday's, uh, Finance Sub.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Gianna?
So, so Jamie's question about if we're paying until January, that's not, that, that doesn't necessarily apply here because we're just talking about fourth quarter. Can somebody just verify that?
Yeah, I mean, what's in front of you tonight would be authorization for the fourth quarter. And, and I don't want to speak for Jamie, but I think, you know, in our finance sub conversation, it was, you know, all right, well, what happens in September if school isn't open? You know, is this, is the same expectation going to hold? I mean, I, I most certainly think we would want to revisit that, this issue at that point, but I think as Jamie indicated, we most certainly had a good dialogue about it yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, are they in the same fiscal years we are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and Gianna, that's, it's, it's, uh, kind of what I, you know, you obviously have that period of time where you're paying for it and you're making the right decision for this period of time. But you, you're setting precedent. Um, I always get nervous when you set precedent within governments. I mean, the same thing happened today. We set a precedent where we're going to give away a half trillion dollars and now we just gave away another half trillion dollars. Businesses, you know, if we get to September, are we going to give away a trillion? Same scenario here on a much smaller level. I mean, we're paying for this out of our general fund, which was the other part of my question, you know, that's, you know, that's essentially you're using taxpayer dollars to pay for something. Eventually, we're going to ask that question. I know it's not an easy thing. This is a big deal. Uh, but I just wanted to at least state what I was worried about.
Thanks, Jamie.
Kevin?
Um, I, I just want to make sure I understand the, the bill that we're looking at. So when I look at it, it looks to all be transportation. Am I looking at that correctly? That we were just talking about transportation expenses?
Uh, I think there's four invoices in your pocket, Kevin. Three of them are transportation. One of them is the vocational education tuition.
Okay. So, uh, my guess is that we all want to continue doing the vocational education expenses because I'm assuming some of that is still happening. Um, i- is that right to assume that some of that is still happening remotely?
Uh, I think that's a reasonable assumption, yes.
So then, I mean, I do think it's important to pursue Jamie's point, right? Because am I also right in assuming that we haven't had any transportation needs for some part of the third quarter? And then we will have zero transportation needs for the entirety of the fourth quarter?
That, I mean, yes, that, that would be correct. I do think, um, again, I think what the greater concern is the lack of transportation vendors that exist in Massachusetts. And I think the state is concerned that if, if there are fewer on the, on the other side of this, this pandemic, it's going to leave districts in really tough positions where there might not be companies available to support transporting students. Um, on top of the possibility that they might not have employees who are available for work or willing to work at that point. So I think what they were, in terms of the recommendations that they were providing is to ensure that, that there is continuity of service, that there are entities available to support districts in these areas whenever, whenever we resume some sort of normalcy. And it's hard to say when that'll be, whether it's September or, or January or some point in between. Nothing anybody can say, but I do think if, if we don't have entities like the, like the collaborative available to us, we'll probably be paying a higher rate for these services, um, or at least in my opinion. And, uh, I just, I understand it's a tough, it's a tough situation to, to kind of support at this point when the services aren't being there, but they still have expenses that, you know, they go under, are going to fall to the communities to have to pay for. There's debt costs that, you know, they still have to pay for. Um, you know, so I think it's those type of expenses that are still ongoing through this time that some of this money would go towards.
Bronwyn?
Uh, I was just going to say that, um, I definitely understand where Jamie's coming from. Um, I remember in this case, uh, we're a member school of the collaborative, so, um, if we don't, uh, pay our fair share, so to speak, that leaves the other districts that we're members with to pick up, um, our portion. And we've been in the club for, for quite a long time and, um, there's just some great partners there. And obviously, we would rather not pay for this if we didn't have to. But I, I do understand why we need to continue paying for it.
Susie, you looked hesitant, but then you put your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I keep thinking about this. I, 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 I agree with both sides, which is why I'm struggling a little bit, but, um, at the same time, understanding that this is, this is the one area where like, we're not providing a service right now. And is there, I don't know where, you, you know, since we are a member school, um, and since the contract for, for the actual services really lives with LPVEC, I would assume. You know, like as far as like, you know, with their bus drivers and things like that, it, you know, have, have we considered any like, are there any clauses like force majeure or anything like that that, you know, would allow for the members to sort of back out for a time that, you know, and, and again, I'm just shooting in the dark here because I don't know all of that. I, I don't know the background. Um, but, you know, the fact that there's no services being rendered, I think, is, is the tough part for me. And and do we have any, um, information from what the, what, on what the other districts or the other member districts are doing? I think that's an important question to be answered as well.
Jamie?
Yeah, Marty was first.
Oh, go ahead. Uh, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I thought a lot about this after we spoke about it yesterday and realized it's not a simple thing. I get it. Um, I still keep coming back. My, my recommendation, my solution to this, give me your costs, I'll pay them. You know, is, is the way I kind of, whatever my member cost is, not the bill.
Right.
Give me what your costs are. What did you pay for fuel? Did you take care of some salaries? Did, what, what decisions did you made? You made the business decision. Give me your cost. Um, you know, as opposed to just what we were paying before, uh, would be what I would prefer. Um, because I know as, as soon as you pay the higher amount, I'm telling you, we're going to be, we're going to be stuck into more of it than maybe what is our fair share.
And, and if I could start before you go, Marty, I think that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, contractually, what are we obligating? You know, are, are we, are we obligated to spend a certain amount even if there's something like what's happening, you know, going on? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Where, where are some of the, the contract, you know, kind of where's the contract scrutiny coming in here to really understand what our obligation is as a member? I think, I, I agree with that, Jamie. Sorry, Marty.
Marty?
Um, a couple of things just to throw out. Um, so we are meeting as a collaborative tomorrow. The superintendent's a meeting, and so I think your, your, your concern, your hesitancy, I, I certainly can convey that. And I know Tom has been in touch with their, um, business manager, who's also the co-intern director. Um, the other thing I think is, um, I think if, if the collaborative were contracting with a private company on our behalf, then I think, um, we would, we ought to be even more hesitant, but in this case, you know, the, we are the collaborative, the collaborative is us, and so any liabilities that they have ultimately come back to us. Anyways, the other, and the, the last thing I want to throw into the conversation is remembering that we may need, uh, collaborative services, bus services this summer. Uh, so, um, I, I think the, the quarter to quarter hesitancy and, and, and sort of conservative approach makes sense. But, um, I think it is something that maybe we should be looking at, um, in combination with all the other member districts. And, and Bronwyn, I was thinking that it, it might be a good, um, topic for the collaborative board to take up with the, you know, the school committee reps.
Yeah, we have a meeting, uh, next Wednesday.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I think that's, uh, you know, Bronwyn could probably uh, express your position and, and get some feedback as well. And, and so a few things just to think about.
So, you know, I, I guess I'd just chime in with my thoughts here. You know, the, the thing that I'm struggling with is a couple of things. Is one, you've got a fleet of buses that are sitting in a parking lot right now, right? Which I'm hoping that whoever, if it's the business officer, whoever it is there, is in contact with their risk company now, looking for a, a rebate on their, their policy for, for all of the live, you know, there should be no liability coverage because those buses shouldn't be leaving the gate right now. And that should be for a school bus fleet, should be a pretty significant amount of money for the amount of time we're talking, if it's March, April, May, June, and, and, you know, potentially a little bit longer after that. So if the, and the second thing is, gas has to be one of their highest costs, except not now probably, but, um, you know, so there's another thing which they have budgeted for, which concerns me that there would be no like ready, ready translation into some kind of immediate savings back on that. The third thing is that we are looking at our own budgets and our own people on a two-week basis. I find it really hard to vote for something on a quarterly basis for the collaborative and we aren't doing that for Long Meadow. And, um, you know, I want to make sure we are, uh, very cognizant of the Long Meadow, um, you know, staffing and how we handle this stuff. And, and, you know, the, you know, we got, if you look at the agenda tonight, you know, it's another discussion we have, which we want to keep supporting. We want to keep going forward. But we do, we can't, in my estimation, do something or promise something more to one segment of a collaborative that we can't promise to anybody else in, in town more than, more than a quarter out. So that kind of concerns me too. So the length of time, I think is, it would be my issue here. Like, maybe we should be revisiting this once a month until, and not just saying that we're good. Until and not just saying that we're good for the rest of the quarter, but, but that's, that's, that's just my opinion. And I think we should be having those conversations. You were talking about Marty bringing up those points to the collaborative and the business office. And Jamie, what you said about, you know, right now, it shouldn't be about what your expected costs are, it should be what are your actual costs? And, uh, and is that's the point of the collaborative, right, Tom, is like, there's no profit margin in here, there shouldn't be any reserves. It should be the costs distributed equally amongst the collaborative members on a provided basis.
Yeah, I mean, I think their budget similar to ours is developed, you know, good six months before the fiscal year starts. So a lot of things change, so you know, you're building it based on best information you have available at the time. So of course, you know, they're not looking to make a profit in the end, but I think all of the points you made are, are all valid. Uh, and reasonable points.
Gianna, you had a question or a comment?
I was just gonna ask about the, you know, the way Jamie was talking about costs and then. And then Tom had been talking about credit, like which one of those applies or like, can somebody just explain? Like if we would get credit of the money that wasn't spent on the things that Jamie was talking about in terms of the costs.
Uh, I mean, I can try to take a stab at it. Jamie, you can add anything?
Go ahead, Tom.
I mean, I think, um, you know, yeah, the, I think all of those comments that Jamie made in regards to. Not incurring those expenses from the point in which we closed in mid-March through, through the end of June. Are, are, are real. I mean, they're not gonna have fuel costs. Um, I mean, I'm sure they locked in their fuel rate though to buy it back probably last year at some point, so. Um, but even still, they're still gonna have reduced costs in those areas regarding insurance. I'm sure they most certainly can look at reducing their level of insurance. And I'm sure they still want some coverage in case there is some damage that occurs, but it probably shouldn't cost the same level. That it would be if they were out on the road every day. I think the way it would work would be that, you know, as. As they got through the end of the fiscal year, they would then know exactly all of those costs. And anything above that is then available or made available to the districts. Based on their utilization, um, in the form of a credit. I think what Jamie has really, um, and again, I don't wanna speak for him, but my understanding of what he was proposing last night. When we talked, uh, was to know what those or have an idea of what some of those reduced costs are. To give us an idea what the credits should be, instead of paying it all upfront, maybe we, we take a percentage off. What their proposed invoice is and then reconcile based on where things end in June. Um, based on that reduced payment and, and Jamie, I don't know if you wanna add anything if I misrepresented it at all.
No, that's e- e- exactly, and, and, and my bigger concern on that, Gianna, is just from a, a credit standpoint, you're gonna get that at the end. Uh, not I'm saying that they're not gonna work as hard, but like the things like Armand was just bringing up, you know, are they pushing their insurers right now? I, I don't know. I have no idea if they are. I can tell you if we start just paying costs, we start scrutinizing this. They're probably gonna look at other things and, you know, at least follow up on some of the questions we have. Which is why I, I'm not a big fan of paying it full and then looking for the money back that, you know, they didn't work to, you know, reduce. So that's why I was saying cautious pay it as it comes versus waiting at the end and, you know, getting this, you know, some credit that we, is arbitrary.
Thank you, guys.
Kevin?
Um, what are these bills due?
I mean, I don't necess- I, I think there's obviously some, some leeway in terms of when they need to be paid. We normally pay them, I would say at the beginning of the quarter during normal operations. To have, to provide them the cash flow, to cover their payroll and so forth. But I'm sure if we wanted to hold off to try to get some more answers and put this on. The next agenda for whenever our, we hold our next meeting, I'm sure that'll be fine. Delay of a week or two is not gonna be the end of the world.
It, it seems to me like we'll have more information in two weeks based on Marty's meeting and Bronwyn's meeting, which will happen for our next meeting. It seems like that would be the reasonable thing to do is get more information before we vote on this. Yeah, so just I, to, to clarify, I know that Marty's gonna talk, he had his hand up as well. We'll probably be having a meeting next week. I'm gonna guess probably like Thursday, Marty, next Thursday, probably.
Next Wednesday or Thursday, whatever works for you guys, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say by that time, we, we'd probably have the first round of answers back to put it on the agenda. Does that, does that make sense for everybody to hold off until we ask those questions and then? Okay, looks like we have consensus. We have a floating hand in front of Kevin. Nice. Marty, did you have anything to add or you also?
I, I think that's a great idea. If, if we have that wiggle room, I'm glad Tom said that we did. I think it's great. I think they, they need to, I think the. Collaborative superintendents, the collaborative board needs, needs to hear and understand the conversation that you're having as a committee.
Yeah, and I'm sure that the other districts have to be having the same conversation. All right, then we will move on. Tom, budget?
So yeah, there are a number of reports included in your packet tonight. Um, the first is a, an FY twenty unitary budget report. We provide these periodically throughout the year to kinda give you a, a sense of. Where we stand in a projection of where we anticipate, um, things to go over the course of the remaining. Months in the fiscal year, um, in terms of this report, my projections were done prior to. Knowing that school was gonna be canceled for the remainder of the year, so I made, I made some assumptions that. Probably aren't gonna hold now in terms of costs that we might incur based on school now being closed. You know, especially around substitute costs that, you know, if we did resume at some point. We would incur some substitute costs for coverage, but so. I would say that, although it's probably, um, it's probably stale in terms of the numbers. But I would say if anything, it will probably contribute to the bottom line that would be available as of June thirtieth. Based on those anticipated expenses not being realized. Um, so, and one of the other things related to this is normally right about this time. We would also be gathering information and kinda coming to talk with the committee about investment in some. One-time expenses, some needs, whether it be curriculum, building, technology. And, um, I think last night at Finance Sub, we, we had a dialogue about, um. Pursuing the purchase of some Chromebooks to supplement the ones that we have in districts. To have them available to whether school resumes in the fall or not. Um, you know, to assist us if there are, uh, closures next year. So that every student would have the necessary technology available to them to support remote learning. We distributed about three hundred and fifty devices so far this year for, for families that felt they needed. A device to support their student in remote learning, um, but also our model was relying upon. Uh, carts and sharing devices when they were in school, which that obviously is not a model that we would be able to employ. Whenever school resumes, so, um, so we talked a little bit last night about. Using some of the funds that would be available in FY twenty to go out and make a purchase. And it really, you know, would be dependent upon what that program looks like, whether it's. Across the entire district or just certain grades that would really determine the number of devices that we would need. We have about, I think sixteen hundred and fifty Chromebooks that we feel are in good enough shape. That would be able to be used next school year, so again, if, if it's an entire, um, an entire. One-to-one initiative for all students, then we would probably looking at another twelve hundred, uh, twelve hundred and fifty devices.
Jamie, you had?
No, I'm sorry, I was, and then I realized I wanted to add one more thing. I would also say, and I think we, we talked about this last night also that. I would really think that like this is a phase one, this is kind of a, if the committee is supportive, like. And the reason why I think it was, uh, Finance Sub felt it was something that we really needed to address tonight was we're. We're hearing that the lead time is anywhere ten to fourteen weeks, so it's not like something we can wait another month and see. Where things go, because at that point, they might not be available for the beginning of the, the school year, so, um, so I just wanted to add that. There is some, some time sensitive nature to this, but also that there may be additional requests. Uh, especially around curriculum materials and or maybe some additional technology needs, but. Um, instead of waiting to have all of those together for, to, to give you the full picture. Uh, based on Finance Sub feedback, they thought we should probably bring it forward tonight for your consideration.
Yeah, that, I mean, I guess just for me, the one thing that, that strikes me right off the top is that while we may be not realizing some costs. Within the system due to the way we're operating now, so be it, you know, long-term substitutes or other. Um, you know, non-recurring expenses that are happening. It almost seems to be like those non-recurring expenses should be shifted into the discussion we're gonna have later on. What is our short-term operating plan? What's our long-term operating plan? We have these rolling two-week shutdowns as they're predicting over the next year, year and a half. How do we work with LEA? How do we work with administration, the school committee to support those plans? And is that gonna take some, some of that funding that would have otherwise been spent on some of these? In-building activities that aren't being spent right now and to translate those into meaningful programs or. You know, I'm not an educator, that's why I rely on Kathy and the experts and Sue and Tom and, and Marty. Um, you know, is there programs, is there stuff you need out there that perhaps we could, you know. Repurpose some of those like things you were talking about for the things that will make a meaningful impact in a children's lives and education. Over the next year, so that's my only thing. Jamie, sorry, I forgot, I was gonna go to you because you're on finance up.
Nope, Tom, Tom hit it perfect from what we had talked about last night, why we thought it was a urgent thing to talk about here tonight, specifically the.
And the Chrome, Chromebooks are what about? Five hundred bucks a Chromebook?
No, I think we'd be talking price point around two fifty. We, we don't have a quote yet. Um, we're, we did ask for a couple of vendors to give us some options, but that's about where. The, the price point we've been purchasing them at.
I can tell you, Tom, we were having that discussion before we started here. I was trying to find a few laptops online and like. The cheaper end of the market right now is gone, like anything between zero and five hundred bucks doesn't exist anymore. And basically it's all, you know, eight hundred to twelve hundred bucks is the, what's left in, on, at Staples, Best Buy, all the. So I'm, I can't imagine the suppliers are any different, so I, I hear what you're talking about with, uh, getting your order in early. All right, open up for discussion. Yes, Gianna, then Kevin.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm thinking if we are operating right now where everybody has access to. Technology at their house, um, or if we know that to be a fact, um, I'm, I'm thinking. What Armin was thinking in terms of spending that money on something more programmatic or, um. Yeah, more programmatic or, or, or curriculum-based versus the actual technology.
Kevin, and I, and I will just clarify, for me, it's kind of like a mix of both. I don't, I don't think it's mutually exclusive. But, uh, you know, everybody, uh, you know, I, please chime in. Kevin?
So I, I guess I just, I'm a little bit confused because. It sounds like we got everybody who needed a Chromebook, a Chromebook. Is, is that right?
Well, I, I would just, I can just add, I do think we're receiving requests every week. I know we have two more carts that we were disassembling for pickup for families. I think now that schools close even longer are probably feeling they need the support, so. I think the number that are distributed kinda goes up every week, um. But I also don't think it's just in terms of supporting them during remote learning. I don't think the model of carts is kinda the approach we can use when kids are going to be in class. So I think that's, I think the other approach that we were thinking about when we brought this up in terms of this investment.
So I'm gonna go to Ryan, Ryan, because he, oh, sorry, Kevin, you have to follow up, then Ryan, then Marty.
Yeah, let me just follow up, cause I just wanna make sure I understand the proposal, cause I think I'm, that's where I'm confused. I, I don't think that you're saying that you want us to buy enough of these so that we can give every kid a Chromebook. Right? Am, am I, that's not what you're saying, right?
No, that's exactly what he's saying.
Well.
That if there are a bunch of people who don't need them.
Okay, hold on.
I think just to answer it, I think, I'm just telling you that if we wanted to give every student one. It would require about twelve hundred and fifty devices. If we want to have them a one-to-one model for certain grades. That number obviously would go down if it were only for certain grades, but I do think that we have to think about. All of the approaches and when they're used during the educational day and how do we have that happen? If kids don't have their own device, so.
All right, I'm gonna go to Ryan, cause I know he's got, wants to say something and he, he opined on this earlier as well.
Sure, so the, the reason everybody needs one is that sharing computers at this point seems like. Touchscreens and, and keyboards seems like a very dangerous idea. And I think we will run in a lot of kids who might say, you know what, my mom told me not to share a computer, so I'm not touching that. And as far as programs and curriculum, if we've been training our teachers, if the admin have been giving PD to the teachers. On how to do a better job of using technology as a tool with the students, then they have lots of lesson plans based on using those tools. If we don't have one in everybody's hands or they're not available because they can't share them, now the teachers have to do things that are completely different. If we think that teaching the kids how to use these tools as well as the learning of the curriculum and all the other stuff is important, then they're all gonna need one. And part of the reason why you haven't had a lot of, I think, a lot of requests or the complete number of requests for these laptops is if. If I have a desktop computer at home, if I have a Mac, my kid can do anything I need, he needs on his homework at the desktop, but he's not bringing that to school. And I'm also not giving a sixth grader a fancy MacBook Air to, to bring to school, saying, no, you're not bringing that to school. So now you have another kid who doesn't have a computer. The only way to make it equal for everybody is to make sure that we're providing the same. Piece of equipment to all of them, so if you do get software or you do give some training to the teachers, every kid is using the same exact tool. And we know that it's available to them. The sharing is dangerous and just to keep everything equitable and fair, we should be giving them all the same piece of equipment. Whether it's every kid in the district, starting with the, the littlest ones and going all the way to twelve, I think that's a worthy discussion. Because I don't know if the youngest people should be having those all day, every day for that, um, as a tool. And I don't think the teacher should use them every block, all day, every day. I just think it should be available and, um, the kids should have one.
Marty and then, uh, Gianna, and then Bronwyn.
Yeah, I, I think I'd probably say that this is something that we've been, we've been heading down this road for a while now. In terms of increasing the fleet of Chromebooks and, uh. For probably the better part of a year, we've been talking about, um, one-to-one arrangements. Because it, it offers to use some flexibility at the classroom level, it offers a lot of sort of, uh. You can, you can kinda manage the fleet of devices, you can, you've got an opportunity to standardize approaches, so. I think it makes a lot of sense, um, regardless, the, the carts themselves that we store the Chromebooks on. Those are, those are fairly expensive and bulky and, you know, I think if we can put this tool in, in kids' hands. I think it gives us the flexibility we need, whether we're out on these rolling, um, shutdowns as Armin described. Or whether it's just business as usual, I think it's a, it's a, it, it kind of is an asset to teachers and kids.
Okay, we had Bronwyn, right?
Uh, Gianna.
Gianna, then Bronwyn.
Sorry, guys. Uh, no, I just wanted to thank Ryan for clarifying because I was, when I was talking about technology for everybody. I was thinking we were talking about still at-home learning, so Ryan's points, thank you for that because, yes, then. You know, not sharing in school, the, and the touchscreens and all that stuff, so that makes sense, so thank you, Ryan.
Bronwyn?
Yeah, I was just gonna agree with Ryan, I think the, um, health and safety is a huge factor. And, um, if students don't wanna use the school-issued Chromebooks when they get home, they don't necessarily have to. But I do think Ryan's right and that we make it equitable and the teachers know exactly what everyone has access to every single day. I think it also would make it easier for Nick and IT in terms of not having to worry about. Different types of computers bringing, you know, coming in and out of the school, um, if they're all school-issued. And it also helps because if we have, you know, all of a sudden an emergency closed down or shut down and we can't get computers. Into kids' hands, like even in the parking lot or something, we won't have to worry about it because, um, they'll be bringing them home every evening, hopefully to charge them. So. Definitely think it's a good.
Ryan?
Yeah, well, two things, one, Springfield has tried to roll out a one-to-one program across the city and. With a twenty-dollar insurance payment for people to get the laptop. And before COVID, I had about a hundred, I, basically around half the school, maybe a little bit more than half the school. Since the shutdown, I had over a hundred more people come in for a laptop. Because obviously the need was there, they didn't know how long it was gonna go, but the need for them to have the technology at home became very important. Um, as far as them charging it, good luck, you're gonna wanna have charging stations in every classroom because they do not necessarily bring back to charge a laptop. But another important thing, I know we discussed last night in finance sub was. That certain computers have special software for certain classes, art classes and music classes might have special. Um, software and those computers will be shared, and I think it becomes a case of like a science lab. It'd be cleaning these devices can become a part of the system or the protocol for that particular teacher. So we will have cases, I think, of classrooms that have a cart, I know that I have one in my building, I have a music teacher. With a special program, those computers don't get to leave that classroom because the kids need that. And they will now have a cleaning protocol that we never asked them to do before because this didn't happen before. So I think there will be carts left in some places as needed by specialized teachers. But really the rest of them, I just think it's too scary to think that these kids would be sharing computers on that one.
Yeah, I agree, Ryan, and that was the, you know, just a couple of things I had, one was on the like specialty classes, so I know like my daughter. Today, I bought her a, a, you know, an, an upper-end Chromebook for Christmas and. Unfortunately, she came home and said her music, AP Music Theory, Composition Software doesn't work on Chrome, and I'm just like, wow, so. Um, so I know there's gonna be special circumstances, probably that and, you know. Mac, where for graphic design or whatever else that, that you can't do on, on some of the Windows-based software. Um, and the only other thing I would just clarify is for me, um. When I say a, a blend of technology and programmatic stuff, isn't that, I don't think the teachers, uh, don't. Uh, aren't being collaborative or, um, talking or sharing lesson plans, because I think our teachers and, and the administration have. God, do I think they have done an awesome job, just up and beyond anything that I could have expected, uh, for here, I know our. Our kids' teachers are, are, you know, sending us notes back and forth or whatever else, but I just think that. Uh, you know, a, a long time ago, I, I asked one person about, you know, could we do, um, open source, uh, curriculums? And, and this, you know, this person, who shall be nameless but still chuckled, um. You know, explained to me, you know, everything that goes into it and that, you know, yeah, it might be a possibility, but it's just gonna take some time to ingrain. You know, where do we go for the open source? What, what are, how do we release it? And I think the history teachers at the high school have showed that, you know, that. It takes time to develop it and whatever else, I'm just, for me, programmatic means, is there proven tools in the educational community? That exists that gives us a jumpstart on helping, uh, formulate some of those education strategies. Again, I'm not an expert, I'll rely on, on everybody who, who is to give me the advice to make good decisions, but it just seems like. Whatever edge we can give to our teachers and administration, I want to be able to make sure that. It isn't because of a lack of schools, school committee support or financials that we aren't doing that. So that, that's where I'm coming from, I'm not, I totally agree with everything you're saying about with the, the, the Chromebooks, except. I really don't see giving it to a kindergarten first or second grader, but, um, but you, like you said, I think that's a point for discussion. Ryan?
Uh, sorry, just quickly on the one point about, uh, uh, is there software out there? Yep, there's a ton, it's a huge business. So do a ton of research to figure out which ones, or so can, which ones would be best for us to be looking at, uh, to get, but. I, I've worked with a couple of companies that I like a lot, I won't say them and give them the free press right now, but there's, there's a ton, it's a huge industry.
Bronwyn?
I was just gonna add, I know it's gonna be tricky, um, and the idea of giving a Chromebook to a kindergartner, first or second grader even, um. Seems kind of crazy, but we would have to make sure if we didn't give them the Chromebooks, that the teachers would be able to, um. Or someone would be able to clean those, or they'd get the exact same one the following day, so there almost would need to be a cart in each room. Um, unless we were, um. We knew that someone was able to clean them every single day that they were being used, because there's no guarantee they're gonna get the same one back the next time, so that kind of. Goes against the purpose of the health and safety. But I understand, I mean, they're, they're pretty young to have their own, um, and bringing it home probably seems definitely. Uh, far-fetched for that, that grade level, but I wanna make sure we don't just have them continue using carts. Um, you know, as we have in the past.
Just to clarify my point, I wasn't suggesting the little kids use carts, I don't think they should use them at all.
Right.
Hey, Jamie?
Uh, I, I think, I think Sue was first.
She can wait.
He never calls on me.
Usually doesn't ask me for my vote either, so don't worry about it. Um, so, the, the only thing I would say is, hey, don't, don't, don't gloss over. First and second graders, I mean, I get, I agree with kindergarten, but, you know, your, your first and second graders, if, if, you know. Utilizing and having one for them, um, I don't think is that, uh, far-fetched of an idea. Um, I would say my second grader will take better care of it than my fifth grader, so I wouldn't get caught up in that. And if in reality this is the new norm, you know, you need to be prepared, be able to do this from home. We should have computers, at least second, maybe kindergarten and first should be a debate. Uh, but second graders, first graders, I, I don't see an issue with that, um, because I'm watching it firsthand right now. Um, and we haven't taken, gotten any of the Chromebooks from the schools, we're using a bunch of old computers or using them now. We thought this was gonna be shorter term in nature like everybody else, so we really haven't adapted yet. Um, but we wouldn't be able to operate this way with six people needing a computer on a given day, the way we're currently operating, so. Um, I, I think second should be considered as well, uh, or first, uh, kindergarten, I get it, they really should not be on it. And I agree with Ryan on that, with the other grades, I think we should consider it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not gonna disagree with you, if, 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 you know, if there's a sentiment that, that it makes sense to go down there, I would just say then we'd do one-for-one for the. Entire district as opposed to segmenting it, but. Um, again, Tom, do you need like a motion on this?
Um, I would think at some point to authorize use of, of quite twenty resources, I, we would want. Uh, the committee to maybe authorize up to either, uh, a dollar amount, a number of devices, something. To, to give us the go-ahead to submit an order.
Okay, um, alright, Sue, sorry.
I forgot what I was going to say.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm kidding, I just, and Jamie, Jamie did catch some of what I wanted to say, but, uh, anecdotally, I've talked to a couple of families, um, that. Have been super polite and they picked up one Chromebook, but their kids are waiting, you know. Um, or their parents have a meeting and they're, they can't jump on the family computer, so. To say that we think that our community is all set and have, they have what they need, I, I don't think that's an accurate depiction, I think there are families out there who are. Having kids wait till parents are done with work at five or six at night, or who are having two or three kids share one, you know, one Chromebook, so. That, that's been a challenge from a few of the families that I've talked to, again, just anecdotal information, nothing, you know.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't think for me that I'm assuming that parents have all the equipment that they need, my secondary concern here is. That as a society, I think there's too much reliance on devices, right, uh, overall? And we, you know, I, it, this is just me and I'm not describing my values to anybody else, but we'd never even given. Cell phones to our children until they're in ninth grade. And that, because at that point they needed a ride to get home. And I, I guess I'm just concerned, me as an individual of. Starting to groom kids as young as kindergartners and first graders to rely on a device all the time as, and, and. And I know we're in this age, I mean, I work for a technology company, I know we're in this age where, you know, that. That technology is part of all of our lives, but, you know, does it have to be that ingrained? Um, you know, and, and I'm guessing we're learning the answer to that probably with this COVID is the answer is yes, right?
And, and every, every student pre-K through twelve gets their, you know, lessons delivered digitally. Yeah, I, I thought totally differently probably a month ago.
Suzie?
Yeah, I, you know, and, and again, having a kindergartner at home and seeing my kindergartner, you know, the, the. Multiple, um, software products that they are using, you know, for their lessons, whether it's IXL or it's Lexia. Or it's Epic Books, or, you know, you name it, it's on there, a preloaded, um, you know, even if it was a. And again, it doesn't have to be an iPad, but a tablet of some sort, might be more appropriate for a kindergartner first grade. Um, just because the, the apps would be preloaded and there would be a little bit more of a seamless, um. You know, login and, and things like that for, for kids who, who need, you know, something a little easier to, to access. But if, if that's what we're using as the resources and they are all online, especially for these periods of time, you know, yes, I'm. I do supplement significantly with physical books and with projects and, and, and a lot of the projects that are on Seesaw. Are projects that, you know, can be done, but it's still, it's generated by Seesaw, you know, that's where we're keeping track of the students' learning, so. Um, you know, as much as I, I understand maybe kindergarteners, you know, maybe not. I'm seeing a lot of use, uh, of, of the, the device with my own child.
Kathy Rizzuto, you look like you wanna jump out of the chair and say something.
Unmute yourself.
Unmute.
I was pushing a little box, not my little mic, I'm sorry. Just, I think that even if we go to a one-to-one device, a one-to-one platform, which I'll be honest, I do think is a good idea in the sense of. We have that, but this is just another tool in the toolbox. You know, and I don't want anybody to think that a teacher is gonna be using that technology every single day when we are face-to-face. You know, it's just, once again, I mean, I have a Chromebook cart in my classroom ninety percent of the time. You know, it is just another, I'll say, a tool in a toolbox, you know, now we have to, as you're seeing. Remote learning is great on some things, but it still is not face-to-face. So as you're having this discussion, just remember that, yes, if we go to rolling shutdowns or whatever. You know, then that opportunity is right there and it's immediate for our new normal. But, you know, if we are in the classrooms dur, for two weeks or whatever, my guess is the device is gonna be used a little bit. It's necessary, but it's not just the only way of teaching. And thanks, Armin, for letting me say that, because I was jumping out of my skin.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, that's why you're, that's why, uh, we definitely, uh, wanna include you in these conversations. Uh, Armin, I haven't heard anything out of you, what's up?
Um, yeah, I definitely think, um, a one-to-one model definitely provides more flexibility for teachers. Uh, versus the cart model that we're currently using, um, so yeah, I definitely think, I think that's a good idea. Um, and again, like from the, with the argument that, like, uh, kindergartners, first graders, second graders should be using this technology. Um, I think there is definitely an argument of, you know, like developing social skills and all of that. But I definitely think that, um, it is good to introduce them to that technology, uh, early on, just so they. Um, are more used to it, uh, as they move upgrades, so yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Hey, Ryan?
So I was gonna say something very similar to what Kathy jumped in and said, but I would also add. The fact that the assignment can be delivered via the computer during remote learning and sent back during. Uh, via the computer does not mean the thing actually has to be done using the computer, so the kid doesn't actually have to be doing screen time the whole time. The assignment might be to go out in your backyard and examine some plants, take pictures, scan them, download and send them back to me. It can just be a delivery tool and doesn't necessarily have to be the thing that the entire lesson is done on. And as the teachers become more adept and they get more training, um, they'll be more creative in using it as. Just a delivery tool instead of the thing that kids are sitting in front of for three or four hours, which none of us want.
Yes, Marty?
Yeah, I'll be quick, I, I, I think, I think, uh, the way Kathy and Ryan said it makes a ton of sense, I think when, when. Folks at home might hear the phrase one-to-one, they, they might, um, associate that with some. New instructional model and, and I would, um, say that we have a lot of great instruction going on and, and our teachers do know how to use. Chromebooks as a tool in the tool bag, so, um, you know, this is, it's almost a managerial thing, you know, making this investment. And it, it positions us to be able to pivot, it positions us to, um, be flexible. Whether we're facing, um, coronavirus-related shutdowns or not, so. I'm excited that we're, we have this opportunity.
Alright, we've had, uh, oh, sorry, Bronwyn.
I was just gonna say, as far as the motion goes, I think it might be better if we do, um. Uh, amount, um, devices as opposed to a certain amount of money because, um, after Marty talks with the. Elementary school principals and gets feedback from the teachers and they decide to get tablets instead of Chromebooks or something like that. Um, I think it would be better, um, Tom mentioned we had to do one of the two, I just think it would be better to do, uh, devices as opposed to. A dollar sign. Just provide flexibility.
We could do a, I mean, I, I guess we could also do a hybrid of both, right? A number of devices to a maximum amount of dollars? Just so there's some kind of permanence on that dollar amount?
Yeah, I think that, that would be, um, that would be an approach, I mean, I have no idea what. The, a tablet would cost, so, um, I obviously would wanna make sure that we have. Uh, the resources built into, uh, that approach to make sure if that ends up being the device for the lower. Grade, ele, elementary grades, then we can make it work within the parameters that you set, but, sure.
I mean, I guess could we say, what is it, twelve hundred and sixteen devices up to thirty thousand dollars might be appropriate, Tom? And if you need more, you can.
Thirty grand?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not sure.
You just said that.
It's gonna be, I think you might add that a zero under that, um. It might be a, a little bit higher and.
I thought we said twelve, twelve hundred at two fifty apiece.
Yeah, but if we're gonna go with a tablet, Armin, I just don't know what that, um, what that device will cost, I have no idea. If they are gonna run in the same range as what a Chromebook will cost, so.
So I guess if we're going to meet again next week, can we get a preliminary on that then and then come back for the final motion? Or is that week gonna hurt us?
So right now, I'll take as much time as, as we have available to us to get the, to get it moving, I would say if. If we're not going to buy Chromebooks, we can get a price on the tablet and order Chromebooks at least for. Whatever grades two through twelve, whatever that number may be. And then either come back with, uh, the information for the tablets for pre-K, K, one. Um, if additional resources are needed.
Marty?
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion, let, let's get the, uh, the Chromebook, um. Order in motion and then we can come back to you with some thoughts and recommendations on other devices that we might need.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
I would if I could, if I could understand exactly what we're looking for. Hey, Tom, do you want to say that again?
Well, is it that we wanna order a thousand Chromebooks?
I think it was twelve hundred.
Well, the number twelve.
And I think it would take care of us down to the, um, grade three and a. I think it would take care of us down to the um, grade three and up.
We're assuming all of them are gonna be returned in really good working condition? I don't know if we were worried about that, those three hundred some odd that are out there now.
Yeah, we're, we're not building in a, a cushion for devices that are, that don't come back in good working condition, so.
Are we saying twelve fifty gets us from grade three and up, one for one, or the entire district twelve fifty gets us?
That would get us the entire district, about, about twelve hundred and uh, Tom, I'm looking at Nick's estimate today, about twelve hundred and seventy computers would cover pre K to twelve.
Yeah, with, with, based on current enrollment, I mean, I would think we might wanna add a few just to cover the ones that might not come back in working condition and or growth in terms of enrollment that, you know, we, we might not have currently accounted for, so, but yeah.
So are we saying we wanna do Chromebooks for, cause that's everyone. So if we, twelve seventy-five, I think what you said, I know we're gonna potentially debate more than that, just to take care of ones that don't come back correctly, but are we saying we wanna look at a different type of device for kindergartners and first, or are we just saying Chromebooks?
I, I think that motion would allow us, if the feedback we hear from the elementary principals is the Chromebook is the way to go, allows us to get the order in for the full twelve hundred and seventy. If it's to go with another, a different device at those lower grades, then we would order a number less than that to cover those grades that we're recommending Chromebooks for and come back to you next week, say, with a recommendation on what device and how much might be needed for those gr- younger grades.
Yeah, and, and sorry, Tom, I don't know why my brain was farting on that other one. It's not thirty thousand, you're right, three hundred grand.
That'd be awesome if you were right then.
Tom, you wanna motion for thirteen, us to authorize you to look into buying thirteen hundred Chromebooks?
Yeah, I would say up to thirteen hundred Chromebooks at a rate of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Okay, call for a vote. Gianna?
Sorry, guys, yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Armin, no. Okay, do we have a motion for the budget?
Well, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but the next item I was moving on to was the revolving account report.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, yeah, exactly, Tom.
So again, this was uh, another financial report, the FY twenty revolving account report that uh, was presented to finance sub yesterday. Um, again, just updating where we are with revenue to date, no projection on what we may receive, but obviously, uh, in regards to building rental, we normally see a, a high volume of rentals in the spring, especially related to dance recitals, which uh, everything's been canceled. So it's those, those type of resources that we would then use to help pay for some of our custodi- summer custodial staff, which I would anticipate we will not be moving forward with hiring this summer. Uh, especially now that schools closed, hoping that we can start transitioning to some of that summer cleaning projects that the custodians would uh, do over the course of July and August. Um, also, you know, in terms of, we, we spoke a little bit about refunds and I know there's a lot of interest around uh, athletics. So we had about three hundred and ninety students pay for a spring athletic fee uh, to the tune of about eighty thousand dollars. And uh, based on the conversation with finance sub, I think it's our position that we would proceed with issuing refunds uh, for those fees. I mean, assuming that there will not be a spring season. Um, so we would wanna get moving with issuing those refunds. And then I think we'll, we'll wanna come back to you. There are probably a couple other areas that uh, would affect some of these, some of the accounts we listed on this report in terms of their revenue based on issuing uh, refunds for certain other fees that we collect throughout the course of the year. But again, I think we'll bring that back to you at some point uh, in the next meeting or two. Once we solidify exactly what we're gonna do. But I think our pri- priority would be getting those athletic refunds kind of moving through the process, as that can take uh, at least a couple of weeks, if not longer, to get, to get the checks issued.
Straight discussion?
The last item, Armin, would be a, a budget transfer for our grants and special revenues, so in your packet, um, and finance sub did recommend, school committee approved it is a budget transfer for the grants and special revenues. It'd be the second revision for this fiscal year. Uh, it basically is recognizing any increased funds that we had received prior to the shutdown. It's about thirty-eight hundred dollars. And then moving money around, again, prior to the closure, that where we anticipated we would be spending the money. Expect that, you know, one, the grant, they'll probably uh, allow for greater carryover into next fiscal year since districts throughout the country are not gonna be able to spend out uh, grant funds that they receive, so um, we'll probably be revising them again uh, at some point later this fiscal year.
Okay, any questions for Tom? Kevin?
So th- this just goes back to something that came up, uh, seems like a long, long time ago. But whatever happened with refunds on the, the international trips that were supposed to happen during April vacation?
Um, so those are, those are handled through uh, a travel agency. Uh, I don't remember the exact amount, Marty, I don't know if you can help me here, but I know uh, there, a majority of the amount of money that a family put down for a student to travel was being refunded back. Um, initially, it was gonna be in the form of a voucher, but the last I recall hearing was that they were offering it for families to take as a cash payment refund instead of a voucher. Um, but I don't know the exact amount, Kevin. I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and find out that information for you.
Uh, that's fine. I was just curious. I mean, I know that was something we were wondering about when that came up on our agenda a while ago.
Yeah, I think it was a, it was a good portion of what they paid, they were getting back, but I don't know the exact percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, there is a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the budget revisions as provided in the document FY twenty Grants and Special Revenues Revision Number Two dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Motion, is there a second? Any discussion? To none called for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Okay, if you beg my indulgence, I'm going to bump uh, number fourteen before we go into executive session. There is a motion, Ryan. Do you believe you have the amended motion?
I move that the school committee authorized that for the pay period ending Friday, April twenty-fourth. The district pay all current employees not on leave. That portion of their base pay and the portion of any annual stipend to which they are entitled, consistent with the effective collective bargaining agreement or individual contract of employment, or in the case of unrepresented at-will employees, pay them the same amount as they were paid for the previous period, with the exception of lunch monitors and the mail courier, who will be paid for one week covering the period of April thirteenth to seventeen.
There are motion, is a second? Motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
Armin, I just might add that um, the revision that, the language at the end of the motion uh, is to allow for us to pay the, the lunch monitors and the courier for the one week instead of the two, which is what we had been doing, but based on this week being April vacation, they wouldn't normally be working this week. Even though school is happening in the remote setting that it is, it, it just seemed uh, that we would pay them the one week that they would have earned if school were open. So that's why uh, that additional language is on this motion, which is different than what we've approved uh, previous uh, meetings.
Makes sense to me. Anybody else? So I'm gonna call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. Okay, uh, we now have a motion to go into executive session? Oh wait, hold, hold on, sorry, wait. Um, no, before we go there, um, no, sorry, Marty, you've got now a continuity of learning. Sorry, I skipped over that.
Uh, yeah, that's okay. Um, I'll be brief. Um, so obviously, important news uh, from the governor's office that we're closed for the remainder of the school year. Uh, we had a fairly lengthy administrative meeting today uh, where we talked about the implications of that and uh, the meeting generated um, far more questions than answers. Um, so we're headed now for kind of a, a longer term um, closure and I think the there's a number of questions on our minds. I think the ones that jump to the forefront are the end of year celebrations, frankly, uh, for students, especially uh, graduation prom. I can tell you that when I sent the email out to families, letting them know about the governor's decision that uh, almost immediately, um, uh, quite a few emails came back asking about graduation. And so it, it really underscored the importance of that event um, as something that culminates our work as a district and something that's incredibly important in the lives of kids and their families, so. Uh, been in discussion with the high school on that, on how we can properly recognize our graduates, class of twenty twenty. Uh, Tom Landers has been in touch with the class officers and the, and the high school pack. So we hope that we can come up with something um, special and uh, so I'd ask people to stay tuned for that, but just to know that we are uh, working on that. Um, in terms of, and, and we also know that there's, there's other end of year celebrations that are incredibly important that, that we'll have to uh, plan for as well. Um, the, on the academic side, uh, um, we sent a survey out to families and to staff separately and, and try to get some feedback to see what, if any, adjustments that we need to make. Um, you know, frankly, I'm a little bit worried about, you know, sustaining our work, which has been fantastic and the families have been very supportive, but sustaining that over the course of two months is something that we need to think about. We gotta make sure it's, it's manageable for families, for kids, for teachers, et cetera, et cetera. Um, a whole bunch of logistical issues popped up and again, I'm just kinda mentioning these things because I think it's important that the committee knows, that the community knows, that these are some of the things that are on our minds. Um, uh, the uh, summer programming is important to think about. Uh, we're not sure yet um, the extent to which we will be able to run our typical summer special education programs and our typical summer enrichment programs. Hoping to get some clarity on that in the days ahead. Uh, we've talked a lot about the reopening of school and, and there are some serious health and safety considerations um, that we'll take into account. We will need to understand what the social distancing requirements are. We'll need to understand um, what our schedules can be. Uh, there was some uh, speculative talk about potential for staggered schedules uh, for sort of um, reduced class sizes. We're not sure what that's going to look like. Uh, but I can tell you that we are planning for a number of different scenarios. Um, we wanna be mindful of kids' social, emotional wellbeing as they, as they, if and when we transition back to school. Uh, Gianna has talked to me a little bit about that and, and put a few things on our radar screen, so appreciate that. Um, and then academically, um, I, I think getting the Chromebooks in place is, is important and it'll help us if we are in remote learning scenario, those, it'll help us sort of standardize approaches and, and uh, provide some consistency for staff and for kids and families. Um, so a whole bunch of things going on and, and I also know coming up on your budget is a discussion of the uh, FY twenty-one budget, so I'll, I'll hold off on that, but um, I'm happy to answer any questions or hear your questions at least, if, if you have any relating to continuity of learning, uh, what it will look like between now and the end of the year and what potentially next year could look like. Um, again, it might be just a matter of hearing your questions. Uh, because there are certainly more questions right now than there are answers. Um, so that's uh, that's kinda where things stand, you know, kind of a, a, a quick check in, a state of the union almost.
Bronwyn?
Uh, I was just wondering, um, are we gonna be able to give the teachers some time this summer to collaborate? Um, to be ready for, you know, potential changes next year?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I, I, we know that um, collaboration time is really critical to the success of remote learning. I mean, we've seen that's been our experience, but um, everything we read, all the research that's out there points to the importance of collaboration as a way to um, align expectations and to share the work, really. Um, so we'll need that time. We may even need some time before the end of the year. Um, we may need time. You know, one of the big questions we've got from teachers is the time that they will need to clean out their classrooms and to prepare classrooms for next year. So uh, collaboration time, I think will definitely be part of the equation. I appreciate you asking that.
Kevin?
Yeah, Marty, I, I, I don't expect you to have an answer to this, but it might be something for a future meeting, um, since we've just got the, the formal word from the governor, but I mean, as somebody who's been doing a whole bunch of online instruction from this exact location, uh, it's really tiring and very difficult to do well. I would love to, to hear an update from the teachers about, you know, how sustainable is it to keep up the pace they're putting in right now? Um, because it's hard. It's really hard to do this well. Um, and I, I don't want us to just assume that what they've been doing for the past couple of weeks, they can keep up for two months um, without checking in with them.
Yeah, well, well said. Um, we, we did put a staff survey out and um, among many other questions, I asked them how, you know, three words that describe how you're feeling. And I can tell you that the most frequently used word was overwhelmed. And uh, so we do have to be mindful of that. We have to be mindful of the sustainability of this, both, both on the student end and the, and the future end. We, we wanna make sure what we're doing, that we're doing it right. Pace is really important and sustainability.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
All right.
So then um, you've got uh, new business, the impact of pandemic, remote learning of uh, recovery, returning to school. I guess you kinda discovered that. But do you wanna say anything more about the budget or are you all set?
Yeah, no, I think it, it's um, I wanted to kinda talk about that separately. Um, we've talked a little bit about FY twenty and, and some of the, the current fiscal year and some of the considerations and, and questions and I think what has become clearer even in the last day has been the potential impacts on the FY twenty-one budget and um, many of you probably read the stories that were in the media the about the um, revenue projections at the state level. about the um revenue projections at the state level. There there was um some revenue hearings last week and some projections that the state is looking at a potentially a four billion dollar, five billion dollar decline in their revenue projection. So that's a that's a significant number. Uh it's it's a fourteen percent decline potentially uh in the revenue that they're projecting for FY twenty one. And so that that naturally is going to have some local effect. And then I also think it's important for the committee to know that um the select board, uh we were told today, the select board um has asked the town manager uh and Paul Pesterzic to revisit the voted budget. And so that is because they are looking at some very different revenue projections locally. We don't have very specific numbers on that yet, but I think it will be necessary if the if the town is revisiting their budget. I think it'll be necessary for us to take a look at it as well. And um I mentioned to Chairman Ray earlier that it probably would be advisable for us to set up a um another school committee meeting next week uh because we will get some revised information from uh from the town probably at the end of this week. So I think what I think the responsible thing to do is to is to kind of uh understand the town's fiscal position and see if that changes anything uh for us on the school side. So um it, you know, this is a, it's pretty significant, obviously. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but i- it's it's worth uh folks at home hearing and understanding that the uh, you know, the economic effects of this pandemic will uh affect us beginning next year and and probably beyond.
Any further questions for Marty on the update? All right, then I would now, sorry, entertain a uh motion to go into executive session.
I moved up to school committee, meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A. And purpose seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
This is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh so the motion is that the school committee is going to meet an executive session pursuant to MGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A. Purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A. And the purpose to consideration of release of s- uh executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote. Uh Gianna?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn? Kevin?
Yes.
Armin, yes. We are now in executive session. Doug?
Hi, Kathy.
One. Welcome back to the April twenty second, two zero twenty school committee meeting coming out of executive session back into open session. We do have a motion.
Move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with units A regarding educator evaluation and authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. I believe that is our last item for the evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Acquire a roll call. Gianna?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Armin, yes. We are now adjourned until our next meeting. We are anticipating probably having a meeting next week. Pay attention to the longmeta.org for meeting agendas. Thanks and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you.